And we'll call a meeting, Lord. We'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. And at this time, I would like to call on Brother Michael Pence of Covin' and First United Methodist Church to lead us in a word prayer. And after that, we would give the pledge of allegiance. Brother Michael.
Gracious Lord God, what a great opportunity we have to gather together as your people. And God, we're so thankful for the great work that our school board does and has done, and especially during a time of just chaos. God, it's so comforting to know that our leaders are looking out for our children. And especially the teachers, God, we play a special blessing on all the teachers. May this summer be one that lasts forever for them. An opportunity for them to recharge and just gather themselves as they get ready to start a new school year, enrich them in ways that you've never done so before. God, we thank you for this community that loves and supports one another. And although it sometimes takes major catastrophic events to see that happen, God, we pray that you help us to find that opportunity each and every day to love on each other, to serve each other, and to just be advocates for our children so that they can grow and make our community even better. God, we love you. We pray your blessings on our work tonight, and we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Brother Pence.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to welcome and recognize our three evaluators tonight, Mr. Scott, Benjamin from Audit, Dr. Dale Byhouse, Audit, and also their secretary, Board Secretary, Ms. Daniel Doris with them tonight. And Mr. Chris Denson from Melon City Board is here to evaluate us. We welcome each one of you here, and thank you for making the trip up to evaluate us. Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda expressed in motion by Mr. Davis and second by Mr. Clark, those in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed, motion passed. On any additions? On the consent agenda, I would like to remove item C, superintendent's evaluation, and put it down under other business if there's any objection. If there's not any objection, would anyone like to remove any other item for discussion? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Kirk, second by Ms. Clark, those in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed, motion passed. Dr. Collins, superintendent's update.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I believe I sent all of you an email with some rebuttal to some items that have been posted to social media in the last few days. However, for the sake of the many that I hope are tuning in via live stream tonight, I will share just a few of those. So number one, the lease agreement for the use of the interim structures at Cobb Par Park has not been signed. Prior to an agreement such as that being signed, our attorney would have to review it, and it would have to come before this body for approval. As of yet, we have not received that document. Whenever we do, it will come before this group, and we will also share it with our attorney. Secondly, the turf that we installed on the three high school football fields did not cost $10 million. I realize sometimes things get confusing, but the total cost of those three fields was $3,828,233. This number was shared multiple times in board meetings, county commission meetings, and even in the news media. And lastly, neither Mr. Darty nor I requested any money at the finance committee meeting for the interim structures. We simply asked for guidance from the group on the most appropriate way to front this money until our request for FEMA reimbursement came to fruition. So that leads me into introducing some of the teams from Shouts. This is the consulting team who you voted last month to let me negotiate a contract with to help us navigate through the intricacies of FEMA. And thus far, they have already shared some pretty awesome information with us in the last few days. So before they come up, do any of you have any questions with regard to any of the things that I have brought up? All right. Come on up. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. First of all, I just want to tell you thank you so much for letting us come into your beautiful area. It's very gorgeous. I'm sorry that all this devastation has landed on you. We started this company in 2009. We are a family-based business. I have Danny Schall, my father, Darlene Schall, my mother, Norma Eaton, which has been like a sister to me for the last 20 years. So we have done this for, gosh, since 2009. And our goal was to come in, there was nobody to help in, help understand and navigate the FEMA vibe or the FEMA system, and help the counties and the cities and the local government get their money back. So you could go out and purchase whatever you needed, but that process of getting that money back from FEMA, and it changes, and it has changed, and it will continue to change. It's a moving target at all times. So in the last few years, our experts have administered over $50 million in disaster reimbursement funds, and that's in Mississippi, Louisiana, and Tennessee. So we have done this for a long time. And if we don't know the answer to your question, I know who to call to find the answer to your question. The most important and impressive thing that I can say about our company is that in our time, we have not had a single audit finding, or we have not had a reimbursement fund deobligated. So we stand really strong on that, and we will go to fight for you and help you and help you maximize what you can and cannot get, what is eligible and what is not eligible. So we're here to help you. We're here to answer questions. We've been doing this through some of our country's most devastating and complex times. So just being in Mississippi, the hurricanes, the tornadoes, I'm not going to say that either, but it shakes things because we've not had any of that. So we're good with that. But we've been doing this for a long time, and we're really proud. We're happy to be here and help y'all and help y'all figure out where you're at. We're going to help with your insurance, your FEMA. We're going to help with everything we can to make sure that y'all can move forward financially secure. And what we do is, under the FEMA category Z, which is a direct administrative cost, under that, you're able to reimburse our invoices and our billing up to 100% reimbursement back to you, up to 5% of your entire projects. So that kind of gives you an idea at the end of any of your debris or your emergency measures or any other categories you have with FEMA. At the end, we will submit all of our documents to FEMA for you to get reimbursed for our services. So that's where we are. That's what we do, make it real quick and easy. Y'all have any questions? Yes, sir.
Any idea of a timeline for a disaster like this? Would you anticipate the reimbursement being?
In a normal situation, we've been able to recoup those within a year to 18 months. But this is not a normal situation at all. You have two schools ground up, temporary schools. You have issues. This is not normal. If we just had to go out there and pick up debris and document it and turn it in, yes, we can get that turned around real quick.
So when do you start?
We actually started last Tuesday. I came over, or this past Tuesday, I came over here and met with everybody involved on that team, and I have not been on yet because you guys have a lot. So we are needy, Ben, right now, and we will continue going.
I was just going to follow up. I was going to ask you if you do a lot of onsite work, or you have to be here, or you can do what you're doing from elsewhere, or?
Exactly. A lot of it is onsite because we need to understand, and FEMA wants documentation across the board, pictures, date, timestamp, GPS, everything we do has to be extremely documented. Some of the work we are able to do remotely, a lot of it is emails or Zoom calls. And FEMA has already been here, and we had a meeting with FEMA yesterday here, and they are in person now, now that COVID's over. They're here, boots on the ground, they're set up in Jackson, I believe, for this area. So if FEMA's here, I'm here. I'm going to be right beside them, listening to every word, making sure they get every word straight that we say to them, and there's no confusion.
Wish you well.
It is going to be fun.
Can I ask you one more?
Yes.
Would you just briefly tell them the difference between, because you shared this with me today, and it's information that I wasn't really aware of until you shared with me, the difference between TIMA and FEMA, and how sometime that paperwork varies just a little bit, you know, because we're pushing for FEMA reimbursement, not necessarily to, would you just say a little bit about that?
Yes, absolutely. TIMA, Tennessee Emergency Management, regulates the state of Tennessee. The state of Tennessee has its own codes and its own procurement laws and its own state of Tennessee work. What we're doing is above the state of Tennessee. We are asking for federal money. We are asking for FEMA money. So there's a clear differentiation in between the two. The FEMA money is more detailed, it is more precise, their laws are a lot stricter. And when we ask for these funds, we have to abide by the strictest law. So Tennessee law might be not as strong as the federal law in a bunch of different categories. So I think that's what you're asking.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
So will money's being reimbursed from TIMA and FEMA? Or is FEMA overriding? The way it works is we apply through the grants portal directly to FEMA. So we upload all the documents to FEMA. TIMA is involved and watching. When the money is requested from FEMA, FEMA will issue it back to the state of Tennessee. You will then sign into a contract with the state of Tennessee, TIMA Emergency Management. They will release the funds to you. So that's the way the money flows. But TIMA is heavily involved, heavily, heavily, because you can have two to five different FEMA people in one project. With TIMA, you have a steady person here all the time.
So the reimbursement, is it because you have to complete the project, like the schools have to be rebuilt before you can like submit all that stuff for reimbursement? Or is it?
We are going to start submitting stuff immediately. Because you have a category V, which is your emergency protective measures. That's your first 72 hours to a week or two weeks. We can ask for extensions longer than that if we need to, and we're going to request that pretty fast.
And remember, the rebuild on the schools is pretty much going to be covered by insurance and the teardowns, so, yeah.
Right. But whatever gaps there are from what the insurance doesn't cover, we're going to be there to see that your full cost is at least submitted to FEMA. So that gap there, we will be asking for that monies also. Anybody else? Good?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate it. So if you see us walking around in your area, your community, your school, we're going to be here. So ask us questions, and we'll find an answer if we don't have. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Holler, ma'am.
Good evening. And I can verify that there, the group that you've just been introduced to, we have booked several hours of meetings already, and had one booked for tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. So they have been here and answered. Whenever we met with FEMA yesterday, as she mentioned, it was about a two and a half hour meeting that was right over my head as far as all the documentations that were expected and things that would have been asked of us to go facilitate had we had the support. So I do appreciate what you guys are here for and look forward to be shared. So I do, and again, thank you guys for allowing us to work with you. Just to highlight some of our other projects pre-tornado would have been the fence projects around the football stadiums. If you guys went to any graduations, you would have probably noticed them, except for, we didn't get them in Mufford installed in time, and I apologize, but it is installed now, so encourage you guys to try by and look at it. As the football fields that we're fortunate enough to have now, and the tracks and the fences, obviously, it's starting to highlight some of the other imperfections that we've got around campus, and so other requests are coming. So as you start seeing capital projects continue to surface and funds be requested, please understand, guys, that it has created the ripple effect that Dr. Collins was hopeful that the stadiums would have done for the rest of the campus. Obviously, success is contagious, so is beautification, and doesn't also create much of a workload, so, but looking forward to more of those. The homemade kitchens that we've been speaking of with Esther Fons, the products are expected to be here on Tuesday or Wednesday of this coming week. We began demolition on the existing kitchens this week. So hopefully tomorrow, we'll make a couple runs to the dump with some of the old stuff and hopefully start putting some of the new stuff in as early as next week. So our kitchens will be more of your commercial style. There will be, we're going to go home and cook pies, you know, it's going to be how we're going to push stuff out to restaurants. So that goes back to what you guys are carrying as far as putting the workforce together. The bathroom projects that we've been chipping along at, those are going smoothly. We're currently at Charger Academy. We're already prepping and doing some demo at some of the other schools, but that one is hopefully on target to finish though this summer. Actually, the HVAC that we are chipping away at the 266 units, which is again, if you remind us, only a third of the units in the system, which the other ones are still, they're all out, just, we will be asking for funds at some point for HVACs to continue. Hopefully, the improvements at Drummond Elementary, Mufford Elementary, you know, we lost Crestview, which was going to be one of our, you know, schools to be able to compare those three. But hopefully, we'll continue, hopefully be able to continue repairing some of those or replacing, should I say. I think, guys, obviously, the elephant in the ring, the interim schools, guys, much work going on behind the scenes that we're looking forward to being able to bring production, you know, bringing things back to life, production, seeing much movement there, hopefully very soon. I would like to believe as early as the end of next week, but I'm not going to overpromise, but things should. The contractors that we're hopeful that will be a part of this are your heavy hitters. So we've got guys, and I've got the confidence that we'll have some manpower here to execute this. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Do we got a timeline, or what kind of timeline do you have for, I mean, we're shooting for?
We're shooting for the start of school year. And I would say you're working, navigating through the bar marshal demands.
Yeah.
Obviously, it's brought many challenges, but I feel like that we've got multiple teams that are all eager to represent numbers, to get this thing rolling, and they all feel confident that whomever's selected will have manpower to execute.
So do you have like a goal of where we think we'll be like next month, about our next meeting, just to say this is where our target is? Just so we can know how we're progressing?
You got to let me go on, man. You got to let me. I'm relying on you for that one.
You know, I shared with the team and all those that have been helping us is that, you know, we'd love to, we'd love to have the concrete done in the next couple of weeks for sure, and then we'd like to start, you know, putting furniture in that building mid-July. That's what we'd like to do. That's what we'd like to do. And I know I tend to push really hard, but that's what we'd like to do. So that's the goal.
Your instructions.
I know, that's why.
I'd stop by along the journey if I were you. You'll appreciate it. Did you have a question, Mr. Denson?
When we start October, this demolition could, he's good.
So do you want to elaborate on your last conversation?
You know, when we've spoken with A2H, you know, we have to continue with that process. And then we've spoken with A2H about, you know, it would be great to be able to break ground on the new facilities sometime in the fall. It's what we would like to do. So we're working with A2H on that. And, you know, when we start that process, we'll be, I guess, coming before this group about construction management. We're going to have to get biz for that, and so, but yes, follow us what we'd like to shoot for.
To touch on the construction management?
Please.
So what we would like, you can stop me where I, where you want to put in, but on the building of the new school, we have been, it's been suggested to us by many in the industry that a construction manager would be the direction that we would want to go with bringing the schools up. And so what that allows us, our control, if you will, there would be, there would be a designated percentage that they would make over the cost. And so it speeds the process up so you don't have to have all of the decisions, what kind of hardware, what kind of kitchen equipment, all of that start before they, before a general contractor will be awarded the project. So by going with construction manager route, they agree to a certain fee that would be agreed on, and then we are more involved as far as the final, you know, the selections. And it's not like just, we got to have these by this certain date. I mean, you will have dates to make, but it's not all before the construction can begin. Because the contractor's going to give you a price based on what your scope of work, what are you putting in this thing? And then they're going to be like, well, okay, well, based off what you want, this is what it's going to cost, and I got to make it. So that's where, and the construction manager position, that was one that allows, again, you guys more time to digest some of these big decisions that will have to be made.
We've used construction managers in the past on these middle schools back several years ago. It's a lot easier than a general contractor.
Well, then you don't have a, you know, there's a lot of risk involved for a general contractor. He puts a price out here, says I'll build this school for this amount. I mean, but if he knows that we have, you know, a say-so in it, it's like, yeah, we want to build, you know, a $5 million lien over here, but, I mean, he's going to put a markup on that, you know, and he's got to make sure he's coached for certain things.
That's all he's going to make.
He's going to make sure he's not going upside down on it.
So have we bid that out, or is that?
No, that is not being bid out yet for the construction. So part of those, part of the documents that are being orchestrated currently are actually in holding, if you will, to finish our most recent, or what we got over here as far as the race, if you, to get to that finish line. There are people working behind the scenes to have those documents ready to go out quickly.
So we all know the final cost of what's really going to be at this point.
For which, the interim structures are for? No, sir, we have, we don't have a number.
When we start building the new schools, they said how long it will take?
I mean, they had, no one at this particular school year, but I mean.
I mean, normal's going to be a couple of years, but we don't, it just depends.
They were going to tell you, they were going to, they will be able to build up. That's going to be, that's going to work in our favor to have your labor pool so close to be able to, you know, really keep control of that, but at the same time, we'll go too. So it's, it'll work.
Be a lot unknowns between start and finish.
For sure.
Weather, just a lot of things.
A lot, a lot of moves.
And I'll tell you one thing also, y'all, that we've learned through the process is, I mean, like I said before, it's a problem I have, but I just, I push hard. I mean, I think I expect it to be done tomorrow, right? I mean, you keep and keep on, but, I mean, things just don't happen like that in the real world. So we're, but we're pushing and pushing, and, you know, we're really hopeful that we can work. Another reason why we're so glad y'all let us involve Shouts in the process, because, I mean, they're going to be able to help us with a lot of stuff that we couldn't have done on our own. So we're hoping to really push this hard.
It'd take us five years to learn what they do.
Oh, there's no doubt.
We'll let you 10. How many mistakes will we make?
Oh, no doubt. And there's like, you know, like, right. I mean, one form we forget to submit that could cost us, I mean, that's, oh, yeah. So, yeah, we're glad to have them.
Any other questions for Mr. Holler? Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Thank you.
Instruction supervisor, Ms. Brooke Shipley, Teacher of the Month.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Our American Fidelity Teacher of the Month is Tori Taylor, and she is from Drummond Elementary. She was our May Teacher of the Month. She's not here tonight, but we're going to get this to her, and we appreciate that from American Fidelity. I'm going to deliver Dr. Bird's report tonight in her absence. The board's five-year strategic plan has been formatted and added to the district website. If you go to the school board's page, you will see a link to the strategic plan. Thank you to Mr. Kirk for your help formatting and designing that for us. Our summer learning camps begin this week. We currently have 1,071 students enrolled. Attendance will fluctuate for the first few days, especially within our third grade, for those who are waiting for their appeals to the State Department, and then summer school will conclude on June 30th. To clear up some information and some questions that have been asked on social media, the school district applied for and received waivers for the remainder of the '22-'23 school year for several areas. The letter from Commissioner Schwinn was included in your online folder. All waivers that we received were utilized if applicable. The one request that wasn't granted was an exemption from testing for Crestview Elementary and Crestview Middle School students in grades three through eight. As you know, those students were required to complete state testing. Finally, I want to provide you with an update on the third grade ELA TCAP scores and retention law. Forty-seven percent of our students were proficient on the spring ELA TCAP test or the retake. We had approximately 16% who were exempt from retention based on the law. Parents and guardians are currently filing appeals with the TDOE. If the parents of students who are eligible for appeals complete the process and are approved, we anticipate approximately 10.8% of our third graders will need summer school and/or tutoring during the '23-'24 school year. The appeal window is open from May 30th to June 30th, so we will update these numbers as the appeal results are received. Does anybody have questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
The third graders, are they attending summer school while they're waiting a waiver? Okay. Do you know how many students were not either, who should have been going to summer school, are not going to summer school and/or have not applied for a waiver? In other words, how will this affect our third grade population next year?
So the numbers that we have run so far, only 10%, 10.8% of those third graders will have had to go to summer school if their appeals are not granted. So far, parents are still filing appeals, and the first information we got that was not from parents, that was from the TDOE, was last night on the ones that have been granted so far. So so far, we have not seen one appeal that has not been granted. We're opening up our schools, we're calling parents, telling them how to go through the process, inviting them to the schools to say, hey, come up here and we'll help you with this situation, and they've been receptive. Parents could, if they were approaching, which meant they were a level three, they were approaching, they could appeal on their basis if their student was in the 40th percentile on their EZCBM. And then they could also appeal if they were below, and they could apply under catastrophic event, which would have been a tornado.
You have students that passed to the fourth grade and still did not pass TCAP?
Yes, sir. Because they could go to summer school. They have to attend 90% of the time of summer school, which is the summer.
I mean, the normal school, they may A's and B's or C's and B's, they pass, but did not, still did not pass TCAP.
Oh, yes, sir. We sure did. Yes, sir.
Well, in some situations, one child had an 86, which would be a V on any normal grading scale, and that was a failing score on TCAP.
So that brings up the test itself. I mean, like two-thirds roughly of the state, third graders, not our district, just the whole state, didn't make proficient, right? So how do we, if the lawmakers are holding these students accountable to this test, but we don't really get to see the test to evaluate, you know, what could we do? Is there anything we can do to say, hey, I know with ACT, you take the test, you can pay money to get the test, see your answers, and then you can evaluate? Well, that's what got me thinking. It's like, man, if my child got held back because they weren't, you know, let me see that, because I looked at one of those practice tests, and it's like, a couple of those questions, if you could argue either way for more than one answer, maybe that's not a good question for a third grader. So I'm saying, you know, take, maybe they won't show you the whole test, but if you could get like the top 20 questions that were missed, so let's just let people look at that, you know what I mean?
I think it's a phenomenal question. I mean, I love that question.
We've always been asked, we're always asked to look at the test. They were released, they will release in about a year some of the items, but we can't see a child's test and what they missed.
Because if we're saying it's not a true comprehension test, you know, I mean, you could read something several different times, you can read your Bible and get several different meanings from it, you know? So it's like, I just feel it would clear the air a lot if we could actually see what these questions are that they're missing. And one, it puts more pressure on the test. I don't know. I think it's just transparency to let everybody see. So what could we do to push for that? So what could we do to push for that?
Well, number one, like I said, I, I love this direction. I have to be real careful, because we'll be here for another couple of hours. Because number one, it's a third grade ELA test. It's not a reading proficiency test. And I will stand on that platform all day, every day. It's, because then they post, well, here are the literacy rates. No, they're not. It's not a reading test. It's a third grade ELA test. I think the principals and third grade teachers will tell you the same thing. They worked really hard to get these kids where they were trying to get them this year. So that's, that's one. The second thing is, I need to form, I need to form your comment into a question and push that up to the legislature. You know, the, the chairs of the right departments, the TDOE, you know, we're about to have a new commissioner. And tell them that's the feedback that we would like to have. Even the Tennessee Department of Education says that the ACT that you mentioned earlier is not aligned with T cap. They do not align. And so, you know, let's figure that one out, right? So that's the requirement to graduate is to take the ACT. That's what colleges want to see for scholarship purposes and everything else. But the T cap that we're required to give is not aligned with the ACT. There's also something wrong there. So I would, I would request that you let me form that into a question. You send it to me, let me form that up and say, this was a question that came from our board. Please get us an answer on this, and I'll send it to the appropriate people, and we can report back to you next. It's a great question.
Yeah. I think it'd be good to see.
I like it.
One more question about third, third graders. So you don't see us getting a bubble of third graders who actually have to repeat third grade next year?
We do see a bubble. We're, we're looking at about 11% right now. That's what we're gauging based on, you know, the way the appeals are going so far.
Okay. That's 11%.
You said 47% passed.
That's right.
Initially.
Initially.
Fifty-three percent didn't.
Right. But there are other pathways to get to fourth grade. And one of those is, one, if you were approaching, then you attend summer school for 90% of the time, and you make 5% adequate progress from what you made on your T cap test to the post-test. That's one way. The second way is if you were below, then you have to do the summer school, 90% attendance, and you have to do low ratio, high dosage tutoring in the fourth grade, which means we will have to provide more tutoring all year long for fourth grade students, if, if that's what it comes down to.
Let me ask one more question about my, John may have to answer this, I don't know. Now, it's, it's June, right? You want to start from June. How is staff EZ coming? Are we up and running? Are they recruiting substitute teachers? Do we have a sub-local monitor hired?
We do not have a sub-local monitor hired yet. I, I do know that. But they have been working with the database and working in HR to get all those things straight. So I, I feel good about that part, but we do not have that person hired yet. I mean, we are still, you know, like, I think maybe you mentioned in the last meeting, I know we talked about this. We'd love to get a local person.
Right.
You know, a retired teacher, a person here to be that contact for us, would love to have that. Because number one, they know, they know what it's like here, and it'd be a good person even to report to us occasionally and report to the board and let y'all know what's up. I have even reached out to two different retired teachers after a couple that we discussed. And still waiting on an answer from one, but we haven't had that. So.
It could be a important job.
It's gonna be a very important job. And I, I think they realize that, and that's why a couple of them are a little skittish. Because at first they're, man, yeah, I'd love to do that. But then when we tell them, okay, here's what we need you to do, they're, ooh, I don't know about that. So, but we're, we're working on that. I, I think that, that's gonna be a key position, Mr. Benson.
Do we know where that one's gonna be housed at, that position?
It'll be housed somewhere in the district. We just don't know yet, no ma'am, no ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Brooke.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Bob, directions report. Mr. James, please.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I don't have a couple of things. We had four teams to advance to the state tournament this spring. I would like to congratulate Brighton High School Baseball that made it to the semifinals. Monford High, High School Softball also advanced to the state tournament. Covenant High School and Monford High School Track and Field also participated at state level. Covenant High and Monford High combined took five first-place medals and placed in a number of events. So I'm proud of our athletes we have here at Tipton County. We had a great day of legal training here with, with our board attorney, Deborah Owen. I appreciate Ms., Ms. Ubanks dropping by today, so she got to experience a little of the compliance trainings that we go through. We covered, she covered Title IX, investigations, Verpa, confidentiality, bullying, harassment, suicide, discipline, disparity. And again, I thank, I thank Ms. Ubanks for dropping by today. Transportation, everything is going fine. We did have a couple of concerns early about get the kids transported, transported to summer school because of the mix-up in addresses and parents confused about what time the bus will arrive and what time the drivers drop their kids off and what time the teachers arrive. But Ms. Brooke and Dr. Norton, I think they got that cleared up for us. Supervisors Will and Charlie went to a training this week, and I'm sure they're, they're gonna have plenty of updates coming forward. And nutrition, summer feeding is going great. We fed, we served 300, 3,300 breakfast meals since Monday and 4,300 lunch meals since Monday. SACC is off to a good start. I haven't had one call yet, so.
I want to knock a little loud.
Any questions from that?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Okay, with Crestview Elementary, I'm just wondering about the students from those schools. Are they attending Charger Academy or where are they?
Summer school is at Covington High School for Crestview Elementary and Crestview Middle and Charger Academy.
Okay, I was like, there are a lot of kids here. Okay.
Because they're doing, they're renovating the bathrooms at Charger Academy, so some of it's shut off.
Okay, so they're all there. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
One question I had, I had to make it about, they had two siblings that are on the school this summer. One, the younger girl, and the other one's older. Her sister can't ride the bus with them. She wasn't allowed to ride the bus. So her mom was had to take them. She was riding the bus and then had to go take her daughter to summer school to get cut. And she tried to get on the bus to let her come home, and her sister, they're not, they're not allowing it.
So both kids are in summer school?
Both kids are in summer school. And she finally had to write a note saying that momma wouldn't have just come get them both. Instead of, when the bus driver was taking one home, the momma would have come back up to cut it and then pick up the other one because of her age or something. I don't know how old the child is, but she might have been in middle school or maybe high school, I don't know.
Maybe get a mic for him after the video, let's check.
Let me get that number after I make the number. Or get the name anyway.
I know the bus driver, he said he don't have, like, I have to mind him, the other kid was a buddy. He said, sure, and I left.
I don't understand that one, but we can fix it.
Thank you, Mr. Will.
Thank you.
Finance report, Mr. Billy Dogger.
Would y'all like some more reading material this morning?
I would appreciate it.
Yes. Hey, at least I got it down, moved down into a spreadsheet, right? We could somewhat look at it, because I had to look through there to get that. So without further ado, we have some business to cover, so let's get started. I'd like to begin tonight by requesting approval from you all to make an amendment to the 142 School Federal Projects Fund. I know I said last month that was the last time, but we were notified by the Epidemiology and Laboratory Capacity Grant that we were able to move some funds that were gonna be unspent in order to purchase some new HVAC units for Charger Academy. And so initially, we thought, even Monday night that we spoke to finance to present the budget, we thought it was gonna be the, the additional money in the ELC. But the ELC program manager has recommended that we spend the money from our own budget, our initial ELC budget first before going to the additional money budget. So that's the difference in the ask tonight. But so we're gonna ask to move it to the tune of $85,000. There's no change to the ELC account. It's simply taking money out of three option codes in that budget and moving it all into one so that units may be purchased out of that account. So our request, Mr. Chairman, tonight is for a motion from the board to allow us to make an amendment for revision three, as it will be titled, for the Epidemiology and Laboratory Capacity Grant in order to purchase the HVAC units for Charger Academy.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Motion by Ms. Ubanks, second by Mr. Kirk. Any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
And to add to that, you will see in your document, that Excel document I'm gonna give you all, take to the commission, there is a column that's June dot B or June dot two that is that on. So you'll have two June columns, and that is where that one's going to be located. And also, the finance committee agreed that if you all approve that amendment tonight, they're gonna present it when Dr. Combs makes his presentation Monday. They're gonna present it to the full legislative body for their approval, so that we can get that done this month in June, FYI. All right. Also, inside your packets were the proposed copies of the budgets for 142 and 141, 143. I just want to go over a couple of those things, because when you all approved the budget for innovative, we, I told you that we would be adding the innovative school models and Title III to that budget. We didn't know those numbers at the time. The new copies you all received in your packets several days ago include those. So you will see those increases in there with the addition also of the Summer Learning Camp Grant. The state announced that funding. So that's not, actually, we're in a grant now for summer school, but there's gonna be another one, obviously, next school year. So that is another grant that has come through into that budget, as well as there was an increase in the Adult Basic Education Budget. I included the letter from the state in your package showing where they've increased our funding from, I believe it's 174 to $210,000. You'll see that in the letter. And you'll see that reflected in the revenue and the budget for adult ed. So because there's been some changes made, also, there's an adjustment to the revenues on the county local match through TESA that was cleared up in the Monday night meeting. So I would ask you all, I know you've already approved the budget, but there's been some changes, and you've actually seen the numbers. I just want to have it on record that we've covered those again, that you've seen them in written form. We're gonna talk about the CFA in a minute to get a motion on that. But Mr. Chairman, a request for a motion just to approve those budgets with those additions that we've gotten on innovative school models, Title III, Summer Learning Camp, Adult Basic Education, and adjustment to county revenues.
Do we have a motion to approve this? Motion by Mr. Farrell, second by Ms. McClarkin. Are there any questions? Those in favor, aye? Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item of business is, I'm gonna request tonight from the board a motion or approval to approve the local consolidated funding application for federal funding and all other federal funds for fiscal year '24, and to authorize the director of schools to make any necessary budget revisions, addenda, amendments, or transfer requests as needed and in accordance with board policy and as required by law. That's required of being our minutes for the CFA for '24. So that's my request, Mr. Chairman, that motion be made.
Okay, do we have a motion? Motion by Ms. Ubanks, second by Mr. Farrell. Are there any questions about that? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
The next request, Ms. Samuel and I met this week, and she, on her behalf, I'm requesting the board tonight to authorize the addition of an additional position in the district. That's a certified position. This position's going to be an interventionist at Drummond's Elementary School. And we're also gonna ask in part of the motion that in the event that no certified person is available for this request, that an educational assistant be authorized. And the payment for this position is going to be funded through the Title I funding application for an interventionist at Drummond's Elementary, but we would be adding a position to the number of employees, so you all have to.
What's that? I'm happy with that. Do we have a motion by Mr. Jenkins, second by Mr. McCann? Are there any questions? Those in favor, aye? Motion passed.
Right. Next, inside your packet, you would have had the opportunity to review the Comprehensive School Health Program Agreement between Tipton County Schools and Methodist Labaner Community Outreach for fiscal year '23-24, requesting that Dr. Combs be authorized to execute the agreement in order to establish a comprehensive school health program for the purpose of improving the health and education of the children in the school system for fiscal year '23-24. The total cost for the annual contract is $945,234.52. You all appropriated funding for that in the budget.
Do we have a motion to approve, motion by Mr. Davidson, second by Mr. Jenkins. Are there any questions? Question?
Yes, sir.
What happened to, I thought Baptist Tipton was gonna try to get into, bid or talk about it or something?
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna try that again, but do it next year. With TESA funding, we weren't sure how that was gonna go. And I, I talked to Parker Harris at Baptist Tipton and everything, and we're gonna, we're gonna try that for this next, we're gonna put that out for this next year.
Okay. So this, this amount reflects the, because the nurses got a fairly substantial raise, if I'm not mistaken.
So I sent you those documents. You'll see the nurse breakdown about RN, LPN, and you'll see salary based on that, is in that document?
My deal was, how much, about how much are we paying more this year than last?
It's not significant. I would have to go back and look at the number just to confirm before I have a warm record saying what it was, but it's, it's, it was in the 900s last year.
Really? Significant amount.
It was insignificant. Last year, it was a significant increase, but not this year.
Is it for, is it for 15, 14?
It's, uh, let me just pull it up so we can look at it together here.
Is it, it's a nurse for every building plus the supervisor, correct?
14, look.
14.
14. And that's include the nursing supervisor or clinical supervisor.
Registered nurse, licensed practitioner, there's, and then you got 14 there. One, four, and nine.
And so you can see where there were the, I guess it's on page two that covers the salaries and the travel and the benefits, and then page three that has the salary detail. And then page four has the actual number of FTEs with the salary amounts and the allocations for sped and preschool. So, Mr. Chairman, there are any questions?
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, next, as you all know, we solicited competitive bids in the paper for a number of items. One of those were, one of those was workers, workers' compensation insurance. One was cyber insurance. One was crime insurance. And another was for the video surveillance solution for Wright High School, Covington High School, and Monford High School. But allow us, if we will, to take up first the workers' compensation insurance quotes. And you all have had that information in your packets to review from all of those that's submitted bids. And so, which chairman of the board wishes to vote on who they would like to choose which product, which carrier for workers' compensation insurance at this point.
Okay. Do we have a, does it, do we have a motion to award the workers' car, carriers for insurance? Okay, Mr. Benson. Based on the bid, I would recommend Lipscomb and Pitts. Okay. Motion by Mr. Benson, second by Ms. Ubanks. Are there any questions? Those in favor, aye? Opposed? Motion passed.
Next, I would like to take up the motion to award the cyber insurance and the crime insurance. Now, the reason I say those together, we had some vendors, I believe, that just bid on the cyber, and then there was a cyber-crime combination. And so that also was, bids were submitted by Jameson and Fisher, Lipscomb and Pitts, and Public Risk Insurers, and I would ask for reports on awarding cyber and/or crime as a package, however you see necessary.
Do we have a motion? Ms. Ubanks?
Lipscomb and Pitts.
Ms. Ms. Ubanks has a motion for Lipscomb and Pitts. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Davidson. Are there any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you. I will notify that vendor that they have received the award of this. Now, there will be some more meetings that we'll have you all be involved, because you all are covered under this insurance too, and some decisions that have to be made with the district during this workers' call for the first time. But I'll be in communication with you through email about that and supporting documentation. So thank you. Next bid, Memphis Communications Corporation was the only entity that submitted a competitive bid pursuant to the public advertisement for a video surveillance solution. The bid has been reviewed in its entirety by our chief technology officer, Mr. Kevin Cullen, and he has approved the proposed product in terms. And MCC has proposed a lease agreement in this project with a 60- lease agreement in this project with a 60-month term, equating to $175,000 annually for the three high schools, approximately $878,000 for the term of the lease. Our request tonight, Mr. Chairman, is that the board authorize Dr. Combs and/or his designate to further negotiate contracts and lease agreements in terms with the appropriate parties. This includes, this request that I'm asking tonight includes granting you, as the Chairman of the Authority, to execute the governmental certificate required to do this, and Dr. Combs the authority to execute the lease agreement and equipment schedule at the appropriate time that those decisions are made.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Farrell, second by Miss McClarkin. Are there any questions?
I got a question.
Okay.
Can you summarize exactly what these guys need to do?
Okay, so I'm going to do my best, and I'm going to call up at the code if I miss something. So Kevin, if I miss something, help me out here. So they're going to install, and as you'll see through the bid packets, they identify the number of cameras, and obviously, for security and strategy, we don't want to publicize that too much, but they're going to install cameras in each of the high schools that will be viewable from remote locations by the appropriate.
Hold it. I thought we had our home camera guy.
Okay. So, 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 so let me help with that. So this would be an all combined total ad hoc, they're going to do everything. They're going to install, number one, cameras in every one of the high schools, they're going to double, sometimes triple, the amount of cameras in each of the high schools, and then we're going to pull those cameras that were in there out, and then our camera person in the district is going to use all of that equipment to start re-upping the middle schools, the elementary schools with updated cameras.
Everything's really antiquated.
Everything's just really old, and it will put it on one system. So, for example, if you go to Monford High School, I'm walking to Monford High School, they basically have three or four different camera systems with different monitors on that just, they're kind of all over the place. And so, they would be responsible for repairing them.
They're going to be updating everything and all that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, with that being said, how old are the cameras that we are taking out of the high schools and moving to the middle schools? Because I just had someone ask me about cameras at the middle school in Monford.
Variety pages, I think.
The cameras themselves might not be that old age for us, but they're all old analog cameras, so they're using coax. They really should have been replaced a decade ago to the time they used digital cameras.
Does that five-year lease include every year there's updated equipment in some regards to what's needed to keep up with technology, or is it every five years it's updated versus every year?
My understanding, and we'll have to work that out through the lease agreement, but my understanding is they'll be updating stuff as needed.
Okay.
So basically, let me just throw this in there to further muddy the water. So the older camera coax stuff he was talking about, we're going to, we're going to purge our schools of those and continue to update to the newest cameras we can get. It's just, it was just, we felt it was smartest to start with the high schools because of so many drivers and student, everything that happens on those campuses, and then start there, and then, you know, maybe even work our way down, but we can use the newer cameras that we pull out of those buildings for the other schools, not the older ones.
Are we like strategically placing, like, would there be cameras at the ball stadiums, at the concession stand areas, those back, all that kind of stuff in that area?
Yes, sir. Interior and exterior. Yes, sir.
I guess they'll be working with the SROs, huh?
Yes, sir. I think the SROs are probably most excited about the new camera systems that anybody wants to do.
They're even including body cams for, for YouTube.
Oh, okay. They're synchronizing body cams.
Well, that's really good, because I've been doing a school safety program also, and that's good.
Are there any other questions? Those in favor of the motion, they'd be known as saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passed.
I believe that's it, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to cover one thing to make sure I covered. I think I did, but just for brevity's sake, that since our last meeting, we did get notified of the insurance, health insurance increases for the district, and that was 5.1% for fiscal year '24. And so essentially, what that means is there's going to be an aggregated assessment, so 2.55%, because typically, we're going to start the fiscal year July 1, and so the insurance rates are not affected until January the 1st at 5.1%. So basically, if you do that across the fiscal year, it's half that 2.55%. But it's still, at January 1st, employees will see the increase of a 5.1% increase in their health insurance.
Can you, just because I know this is a question that's asked.
Yes.
Because we get the 5.1 on health insurance, right? It was 5.1 increase, and then the salary increase was 5%. There's confusion in that as to how that truly affects the teacher's salary.
Yes. Dr. Combs, come out and list your help to get me on display note here real quick, and let me queue up. I actually have a document that I've worked on because this question comes so frequently as, you know, hey, we got a raise, but they just got all taken in insurance. And so I want you all to see this in its form so that you can, maybe it helped me explain it to those that asked the question, and then we will, let me sign in there.
It's your magic number. Nobody else can see that number. Everybody, I can picture it. Says you're connected. That's a good thing.
That's a good thing.
There's a little delay.
Just got to get there to, um, let's see if we got this here. So, um, I don't think I can remember. Wrong document, stand by.
While, while we're waiting, I do want to share that American Fidelity brought snacks. Is that correct?
Yes.
So they have snacks for after, please feel free to go get some on the way. This might be a good time to throw that in there.
Can you all see that very well? I need to blow it up a little bit. Oh, 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 I went too far. Went too far. All right, so I just took the average salary of a teacher, which is, Dr. Combs?
It's all on me, I didn't do that.
Yeah, but you're going to be my saint and grace on this. Got me. I tried that, it didn't work.
Kevin?
This is why the CTY went in to leave. Kevin, can you help here?
Turn it off and turn it back on.
We've got time for that. Reboot.
Internet, everything.
You keep talking.
I'm going to stop sharing.
Click on your spreadsheet again.
Let me stop sharing.
Click on it.
Click on your spreadsheet.
Click on your spreadsheet again.
All right, I did it. I'm going to stop sharing and resume it. How about that?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, I, this is very, really a frequent question, so I'm glad that you asked so that we can get this done.
We have a good evaluation going too.
This wouldn't happen in always.
I won't touch this screen this time. So stand over here.
I want to go get a snack.
Right? Average salary of a teacher, let's say, for example, 59.5, 52. They got a 5% pay raise, put them in 62.530, which means they got a $2,978 pay raise. So over 20 paychecks, that's 148.88. Currently, this is the insurance breakdown. I just, we have a lot of plans, the rate sheets are in your packets, and you know there's about 14, 16 plans. I just chose the standard PPO because it's kind of middle-of-the-road plan on single-family employee plus spouse. This is the county's portion, this is the employee's portion, this makes up the total of the insurance, and with a 5.1% increase on this amount, that's those amounts, okay? So this would become the county's additional obligation on each one of those plans, this would become the employee's obligations, and over 20 paychecks, for example, I have single coverage myself, I have single coverage, I'm going to pay a dollar and 94 cents more 20 times a year on the insurance increase. And a teacher that got the single coverage, they would pay that, but their pay raise is 148.88. So 148.88 minus the 194 is what their pay raise would have been. So because you've got a 5% insurance increase and a 5% pay increase, they don't cancel each other out because it's based on different figures, but a lot of people think that. So, you know, obviously, your family coverage insurance with your employees, I mean, your spouses and children are higher coverages, but the highest of this group is $12.61 for 20 times a year. So we pay insurance 20 times a year, teachers are paid 20 times a year, then they get four paychecks on June 30th, right? And, but no insurance benefits come out of those four checks. So that's kind of the, and this would be the new total required for the insurance payment. Does that help explain that a little better? It's not as bad as it's.
Right.
Is there any chance you, Billy, could send out like an all-hands email to everybody who's getting a pay raise and obviously getting an insurance increase that kind of breaks down and explains to them, I don't know?
100% yes, sir.
Can you make a video and?
He'll do, he's going to do a, he'll do a TikTok.
That concludes your report. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. Unless there be any other questions.
Any other questions, Mr. Darling?
I have one question. I know that we voted to do the whole SRO equipment and safes and all that stuff, is that still something that's ongoing? I hope that's a hundred question, right?
No, that's a Mr. Turner question.
Oh.
The infamous Mr. Turner.
Can you answer that perhaps?
So, yes, the, those have been ordered.
Okay, cool.
You were referring to those security lockers that were going to receive, so they've been ordered, and they're, to my knowledge, they're not here now. Hunter would have installed them.
No, I have not, no, no.
So he hasn't installed them.
Are there any other questions?
I got one more quick question.
All right.
Has the state told us how much security funding we're getting yet?
No, sir.
Okay, so, you want to jump on that?
Please.
Okay, so, I talked, hey, you asked a question that's unfair. So I called, after the Finance Committee meeting, we, we brought that up Monday night that we weren't sure, you know, we asked, and I think there was some confusion, or I think, I don't think a lot of us knew what the answer to that question was, right? So that night, I spoke with Homeland Security. Homeland Security said, here's how it's going to work, John. They're going to send, the Department of Safety is going to get all the money, right? And then the law enforcement agencies are going to apply to the Department of Safety for that money, and then the Department of Safety will send it right to law enforcement. We're completely out of the loop. They send it, law enforcement requests it, they send the money to the law enforcement agency, done deal. So my understanding is that's supposed to occur around July 1. We're supposed to get actually more information on it this week or next week. I called the sheriff, and he was aware vaguely that that's kind of what the process is going to be. They're still waiting on a few more things to fine tune it, but that's how the process is going to work. So with that said, remember, y'all having this new budget that you've approved, like $700,000 for SROs. Well, if this money hits and goes there like it's supposed to, at some point, we're going to have to come with an adjustment and say, we don't need that there. Where do you want to put it?
I guess that gets into with the new TESA formula, there are a lot of grant stuff we weren't sure.
Yes, sir.
Do we know more about that, or does things like that we'll continue to find out?
They, they will. So I think, and I think that bill was kind of a last minute, that was kind of tagged on, you know, because of the shooting and everything in Nashville, so that was added on there at the end. I know that we're still getting the safety grant, the, the safety part that's supposed to be in there, but we don't know how much that is. I was just asking Glenn about it today. We're still waiting on that information. But that kind of is throwing a bit of a wrench in it for all the districts as far as how that's going to be funded with those SROs, because basically, the schools, I mean, we're not going to see any of that money that we used to, it's going to be directly from law enforcement. Now, the good news is, they said high-end 75 grand. So remember, we were fronting, we, we were giving each SRO, each, you know, 50 grand per officer, they can apply for up to 75,000 per officer. So you know they're going to be excited about that as far as what they can offer, and maybe it'll be, it'll help them find folks, because I know they're having a hard time finding officers.
Right.
So, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Billy.
Thank you.
That brings us to other business. I move the director's evaluation down to that. As you all know, Dr. Combs received an excellent evaluation, his score was 4.63 out of 5. I mean, you can't beat that. That's a phenomenal score. And speaking with Dr. Combs and Attorney Steve Shields, Dr. Combs is, he's extremely grateful with his yearly evaluation recently completed by the board. And during our discussion, and based upon his excellent evaluation, Dr. Combs and I came to an agreement subject to board approval, that he'd be granted a one-time bonus in the amount of $6,000. It's, it's up to the board. We, we, Dr. Combs and I discussed it, and, you know, he's had, done well this year, and we're thankful to have him, and it's up to the board to, to do this.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Davidson, second by Miss U. Banks. Are there any questions?
Well, no.
I'm kind of disappointed.
Those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passed. On behalf of the board, thank you, Dr. Combs, for your dedication and hard work that you have done this year as our Director of Schools. Would you like to ask something?
Thank you. Number one, I'm, I'm very humble, I appreciate it. We've all been through, and there's no way we could write a book on what we've all been through in the last, between COVID and masking and CRT and floods and, and test, and tornadoes and all that. So I, I appreciate that. I, I would like to say that if the board gives me the graces to continue to do that, my wife and I would like to put that $6,000 toward the endless possibility scholarships again. So with that amount of money, then that'll be two $1,000 scholarships that we can do per high school next year. So, you know, with your permission, I'm, I'm just going to, we'll, we'll continue to do that. So I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
So we appreciate you, Dr. Combs. I would have you, that's for sure. I think Mr. Ben Kirk had something he wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, you know, I wanted to speak, make a statement, and I'm hopefully going to speak for us all. I'm new to being on the school board, I'm still a little wet behind the ears, as they say. Been in this area for right at 27 years, pastoring and, and different things, and I just want to speak into the community and a lot of the things that have been said this week, the details that came out that you brought up about social media, and some decisions that were, that come up in communication, and kind of like, you know, we talked through the facts, but there was a little bit of communication breakdown, and honestly, we were surprised at some of the events that came up. However, we did talk through the facts, and we can see where there may have been some confusion, but I don't think that anything was intentionally done or out of malice or anything bad. But with the social media, things that came out with some of the information that was spread, I, I support the truth, and I just want to publicly say to people that are listening that the people represented around this table, from Lori all the way around to the end, have 100% of the best interest of this county, its teachers, its students, and the taxpaying citizens, be totally transparent and fiduciarily responsible in all things. Because at the end of the day, all of our reputations are on the line, and I, I feel like I've been in this community enough, and if I feel like something's wrong, I'm going to say something wrong, and I'm going to ask questions. And we learn by asking questions. I've had a lot of questions since I've been elected, and a lot of them have been towards Billy because I'd like to slow down, I don't understand the budget, you know, it's like, and, and we gain understanding from answers that we receive, and we process that information, and we move forward with making the best decisions by identifying the issues, prioritizing them, discussing them, and solving those complex issues. And I can say, I never thought in my lifetime that I'd be sitting in this seat, but I never thought I'd be going through, went through COVID and experienced that as a father, sitting on the sides of kids going through high school, but I never figured that we'd go through We haven't been there yet. We haven't walked this road yet, and none of us have gone through the complex issue of currently maneuvering through a natural disaster. I mean, we, we lost two schools in our community, completely destroyed, and someone said, it sucks. Yeah, does it suck? 100%.